Weather is really nice. Last meeting came to It's a beautiful day today. Wasn't it cloudy this morning early on? Hey, good evening. This is a work session of the Greenbelt City Council. My name is Emmett Jordan. I'm the mayor.
Kristen Weaver, Mayor Pro Tem.
Jenny Pompey, Councilmember.
Amy, is he still a councilmember?
Rodney Roberts, City Council.
Silky Pope, City Council.
And Daniel McKinney, City Council.
Okay. Hey, any information items for the end of the meeting? Mr. Sammarone? Okay. Well, let's go ahead and get started. Just briefly, you know, this is a work session. We hold work sessions on Mondays and Wednesdays several times a month to exchange information with community stakeholder groups, gather information from staff, advisory boards, or residents. No votes or formal actions are taken at work sessions. Our work sessions as well as meetings are open to the public except for executive sessions as authorized by state law so that residents and others can observe council deliberations. We do strive to provide reasonable opportunities for the public to voice opinions on matters being considered. So we'll pause periodically during the work session for a public comment, probably every 20 minutes or so, if not sooner. During these times, if you wish to address council or ask a question or make a comment, if you're in the room here, just raise your hand. And after being recognized, you can go over to the podium. Please state your name and where you live in Greenbelt. If you are on Zoom virtually, you can raise your virtual hand and submit a question or a comment using the Q and A tab, or you can raise your virtual hand and we'll promote you. Once again, you'll need to, you'll need to log in with your name and where you live in Greenbelt. We don't accept anonymous comments. And if you're watching on cable TV or on Zoom or on Facebook live streaming, you can send us an email. The email address is questions@greenbeltmd.gov. So as always, we ask you to limit your remarks or comments three to five minutes to speak on one topic related to the question under consideration. We ask that you avoid questioning the motives of others. And in general, we're all neighbors here. So please, we ask that you moderate. Just be kind, as kind as possible as you make a comment. And we'll do the same. Tonight, it's exciting work session. We're meeting with representatives of WSSC discussing the standpipe or water tower rehabilitation. The standpipe, I guess, is what you call it. And that's up on the top of the hill at Lastner Lane and Ridge Road. And that, that structure was actually built in 1936. So it's been around for a while. And WSSC is proposing to rehabilitate, to repaint and just fix up the tower. But they've also acquired a piece of property, a house that was there. They're planning on demolishing the house to provide additional access. So we, we've held, I guess, two work sessions. This is the second one where we've kind of talked, second or third that we've talked about this. But, you know, it's always nice to have our friends from WSSC with us so that we can chat. Because there, you know, there are issues with the city, even a city as young as the city of Greenbelt. So, City Manager Sammarone, how are you tonight?
I'm doing great. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Good evening, guests. Monica, welcome. So we're excited to be here tonight and talk about this project. And joining me from our team is Terry Ruby and Ryan Sigworth with Planning and Community Development.
From the planning staff?
Yes.
So I see Monica-
Should we do introductions?
Can you introduce the team here from WSSC?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. It's always great to see you and the rest of the council. Monica Marquina, Director of Government Affairs. And with me, I have several team members, and they'll go ahead and introduce themselves.
I'm alphabetical here. Wayne Anderson. I'm Telecommunications Manager for WSSC.
I'm Christopher Hurd. I'm the Project Manager with WSSC.
My name is Thomas Johnson. I'm the Project Outreach Manager with WSSC Water.
And my name is David Wilkins. I'm the Customer Advocate for WSSC.
Fantastic. It's kind of like a full-court press here. Seven or eight of you here. But we, you know, we're, we have some, our residents in the city, we have, you know, some concerns about the project and how it's being carried out. So we want to talk so that we can reach consensus and so that you can move forward, that we can move forward so that the, the standpipe is in good condition for, it's not just our water supply. So Monica, this is the standpipe. It's one of the highest points in Prince George's County?
Exactly. And we have Christopher Hurd here. And the Hurd can talk about what it, why we need the standpipe, first of all, right? Because we, we kind of see, you know, we're so modern now, right? In society, like, why do we need to have these standpipes? But they're actually a really great benefit to the community, right? So if there was a reason why you would need to have almost like an emergency source of water, that's what we need to strategically place these standpipes. And we had this forward-thinking, you know, decades ago, right? And so based on elevations throughout our service area, that's why standpipes are so necessary, right? So what I have as part of the agenda is just a little bit of an overview for those that are listening that may not have a really understanding how expansive WSSC Water is. We are your bi-county state agency utility. We're not a private utility. We're a public utility. We deliver over 162 million gallons of water each and every day. We have three reservoirs, two water filtration plants, 60 water tanks or standpipes, over 1,600 amazing Team H2O employees, 55 plumbing stations. And we have over 500,000 meters in our system. And we conduct 2.25 million reads of those meters. And so, as we mentioned, we have quite a few project team members here because we want to make sure that we're responsive and working with you in a collaborative manner. And that would include having our subject matter experts with us today.
Appreciate that. Mr. Johnson?
We are slowly but surely right. We're going through the presentation. Is it possible to pull that up as we discuss?
I think we can probably arrange that, yeah.
Thank you.
And I'm the first-
So in terms of WSSC facilities, so the standpipe, one of the highest points. I know there's a very, very large facility there on Kennelworth Avenue. So is that, does the water from here sort of filter down there?
Exactly. So based on the elevations where we determine where the standpipes have to be? Yes. And so, as you stated, it's been a long time since we renovated this, the standpipe. And so, so the project map identifies exactly where the standpipe is located on Lastner Road. And so, as part of that project, we have, as mentioned, the mayor mentioned, we acquired an adjacent lot, so-
It's not actually showing up on Zoom, I don't think. It's showing up on the screen here, but it's not actually showing up on Zoom. So slight, slight pause while we get that shared on the screen.
Mr. Roberts?
Thank you. I appreciate it. What really is striking to me and what I'm really concerned about is your plan to expand the fencing. Essentially, it looks like maybe you plan on turning that entire residential property into use for whatever, you know, you would use it for. So I'm really concerned about that. You know, I don't think that's appropriate and certainly not acceptable in my, my view. I mean, you can't just come and, I don't know how much you're talking about expanding the fencing, but if you're thinking about fencing that whole residential property or something like that, that, that would mean really a big problem with me.
Yeah, your point's well taken. Let's go ahead and go back to the overview and then we'll kind of circle back and dive into the specifics later.
Existing conditions slide? Just kind of where we are right now?
Go to slide, what is that, 12? Thank you.
Still not showing up on the, on the Zoom window. Okay.
We want to let you know that we will address that question that you have later on in the presentation. Okay.
I just wanted to get that out there.
Absolutely.
When I read, you know, read the information, that was one of the most striking things in there.
Is there some way, Ms. Pope has the present, it's an old slide-
I think, I think James is getting it.
There you go. There you go.
We're all watching.
There we go. Oh, fantastic. There you go. Oh, it's beautiful. I think it's about 74 degrees right now. Tomorrow's supposed to be spectacular. Wednesday, yeah.
I'm working on it.
Members from our team here. This is Brandon Stewart. He's a customer advocate. And also Carlos Alizar. He's our new outreach manager. So I just wanted to recognize them.
Welcome.
Because I think I have the older one, but if we, maybe if, if somebody can-
Can highlight the changes as we go through?
Yeah.
There you go.
Good? Okay?
And Coastway has the most recent one. So I think we're good.
Gee, how do we used to do this? You'd have to have a big panel board and kind of flip through presentation.
Yeah, 12, please.
12 is- It should say existing conditions on top. So I think you got to go back. Keep going.
That was amazing information. Okay, hurry.
All right. So just some background on the tank. I know the mayor mentioned that this tank was constructed in 1936. But it is a 2 million gallon standpipe. It's 69 feet in diameter and 83 feet tall, built in 1936, approximately 30 years before the, the rest of the subdivision in that area. The, the lot that the tank is currently on is owned by the city, but WSSC purchased the adjacent lot at 241 Lastner Lane just to help provide better access and, and just have more space to work and install the new, the new yard piping. And currently, the existing driveway is off of, off of Ridge Road. And there are three existing structures on the site. Three sheds for third-party vendors and WSSC telecommunications.
And I did want to mention, as we go through the presentation, it'll become clear as to why we need the additional property from that adjacent home as far as the staging area and some remediation that we're going to be doing as part of the restoration.
So the existing dwelling on 241 Lastner Lane, I know when we met, I believe back, it was back in October, one of the comments that was made by you guys and the community was the possibility that items in the house could be reused by people in the neighboring community. So since that meeting, we met with Community Forklift. Not sure if you're aware of them. But they came out to the house and took a walk-through, and they only found really a couple salvageable items, maybe a few doors and handrails. There's really nothing in the house that they saw worth salvaging.
Wait, it looks like there's a nice stove and a microwave in there.
Yeah, but, so the, the next thing is, the house has been abandoned for a while. So it's just some rodents, some cockroaches, the roof leaks and some vandalism. You can kind of see in the-
See that?
In the picture, in the top picture, you can kind of see where the vinyl siding's kind of fallen off the soffit. And the back of the house, we don't have a picture of it, but there's, it's covered in tarps. So the roof is leaking. And the Greenbelt City Fire Department reached out to WSSC about possibly using the house for training until it's abandoned. So I believe they are kind of working to come to an agreement on that.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, I think one of the things, because I actually had a resident remind me of this recently, was that some of the exterior, like some pavers or some of the, I think some of the materials, I think there's a, there's a retaining wall. I think there was some interest. I don't, did, did you look at any of the outside materials with Community Forklift? And-
So, yes.
And they didn't think that any of that was salvageable?
No.
Okay. Yeah, there was, the, the resident who spoke to me was interested. I guess some, I, I, I'm not familiar enough with the house, but like some flagstone pavers or something was something they specifically mentioned.
Now, I don't believe there's any flagstone pavers.
Maybe it wasn't flagstone, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think they're all like concrete blocks that the previous homeowner made.
And they were cemented together. That's why it's going to be hard to get them apart unless we break them apart.
Okay.
That did come up at the last week's meeting with advisory.
Okay.
You can go to the next slide. So this slide here is the demolition plan. It kind of shows the house being demolished, the shed on that 241 Lastner Lane property as well, and the driveway. And then off of Ridge Road, kind of towards the north side, there's a, there's an additional parking area that's kind of just broken concrete blocks and some other stuff to make it up. That'll be removed as well. And then on the existing lot, if we want to call it that, where the standpipe is itself, we're going to repave the driveway. There's a shed over in the top left corner, right there, yes, that'll also be removed. That's currently been abandoned. And then the, around the south side of the tank, there's an existing altitude valve vault. And the piping on the southern end of the tank will also be removed. So if you just kind of look at that site as, as its own thing, you can really see just how small that site is. And it doesn't leave a lot of room for the contractor to store more materials, equipment, or really anything on, on site. So having the adjacent lot will really help with that. And that'll help with time and cost, obviously. So you can go to the next slide. And then this is just the proposed site plan for the finished project. It just shows the, the new driveway that's going to be installed off Lastner. We're going to use the existing driveway apron. It's not shown on this plan. It was mistakenly left off. But we're just going to reuse the existing one. There's not going to be any modifications or changes to that. And then the new altitude valve vault is that large square, kind of right south of the driveway. That's going to house the altitude valve and the check valve that'll fill the tank and drain the tank depending on, on demand. And then the new piping for that as well. And then one of the other concerns that was brought up in the last meeting was the fence was shown right around, right next to the sidewalk off Lastner Lane. And we've kind of pulled that back 25, 30 feet more onto the property.
You, you mentioned the altitude valves, and those are fixtures that are not currently at the standpipe. They're new?
There, current, there is one. I have a picture of it in here. It was just, it was installed when the tank was constructed. So it's nearing the end of it. It's time to replace it.
Just wondering, when, when it discharges or when it's regulating water coming in or out, is it noisy? Does it make noise?
All it does is just opens and closes.
It's just a, it's a valve that is kind of automatic, opens and closes.
We have a big presentation. See, Mr. Roberts has the-
Mr. Roberts.
What is all the mess you have there on the right bottom? That big square part?
That is the altitude valve vault.
That, that whole thing is, is the valve? So is that above ground, below ground?
Below ground.
Below ground.
Yes.
And then what, you got a fenced in or something, or?
Yeah, you can see the fence line on the, the property.
So more specific.
Laster.
Fencing, so you're fencing everything except for 30 feet from the sidewalk?
Yes, the back. So this is the neighbor's fence, which is a- Butchers to our fence. And then the other neighbor here, as well as the neighbor here.
I think that's a huge intrusion into the residential neighborhood.
So this fence is already a fence right next to the neighbors. We already have a fence there. What are your thoughts on that? Because the, as we currently have it in process, we have folks or people getting into the home. I'm sorry, you can't hear, so I can't- My apologies.
Is that whole area going to be covered with bluestone or something like that? I mean, what are you, what are you doing? Turn it into an industrial lot?
It'll be grass.
Hello? Okay.
There you go.
Okay. So as you see here, safety-wise, for not only our asset, but also for the community, because as you see, we have, somebody's going vandalizing the home currently. And we want to make sure that we keep the asset safe because it's also not only impacting the city of Greenbelt, but it's impacting others. So we want to make sure that this asset is protected well, not to the point of where, and the good thing is, is Chris has the pictures of the type of fencing that's going to be utilized. We're going to get to that pretty soon. We've already had conversations. And, and Dave, who are the community members that live here?
He is here.
Mr. Ziller?
And Melanie as well.
And Melanie.
And Melanie. So we've already had conversations with both of these community members that live here, as well as here. And they're in agreement with the fencing that we're going to put. And so we're working together as a team to make sure that both sides, we were in tandem.
And they have raised the concerns about security, knowing that people have been trespassing on the property. So they're in agreement that they would like to see fencing.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Let's see, let's go on.
So then this is our proposed landscape plan. I know it's kind of hard to read exactly what the plantings are, but there's a total of 52 proposed plantings. It kind of includes arborvitae's, holly bushes. I believe there's some, some birch trees. There's a pollinator garden out front. That'll be kind of, if you're looking at the site a little to the left of the driveway, right along the sidewalk there. Yeah, right there. And so, yeah, it'll provide some screening for the fence and just the site and just try to make it look, you know, nice.
How, the maintenance, how often would? It sounds like it's low maintenance, but with a pollinator garden, does that mean that no one's going to really cut the grass there?
No, WSSC will do the maintenance as, as required and keep up with it so it looks presentable. So, and then this is just kind of a brief rundown of the project's scope. I know we talked about it at the last meeting, but I just wanted to go over again in case, you know, there was anyone new or anyone kind of wanted a refresher. But there's the site work, which will include demolishing, demolish in the house, and then a new access drive, a new perimeter fencing, new yard piping, an altitude valve vault, some structural improvements to the tank that'll help improve water quality, structural steel upgrades to the tank to ensure it's, you know, used for another 100 years, foundation repairs, some OSHA upgrades to railings and handrails. So, you know, WSSC workers and anyone else that has to access the tank can work safely. And then we're going to be coating the tank, which includes abrasive blasting the existing paint that's on the tank and applying a new epoxy-based coating to protect against corrosion. And then just looking at the pictures on the screen on the top left, there's a picture of the existing fence out there from, I believe a tree fell on it and kind of damaged it. And then to the right, that's a picture from the top of the tank. You can kind of see some, some rust that's showing up there. And then the bottom right is the foundation where the concrete is kind of chipping away. So that'll also be repaired. And then the other picture is the existing altitude valve that will be replaced.
Okay. What else you got? Paint, painting schemes?
So we have, so typically, WSSC paints the tank a solid color, whether that's a white or the WSSC blue. And I'm sure everyone has seen. But we also have a couple possibilities that we would, that we would paint the tank if, if you all liked one and wanted to go that way. The first one is a light green base that kind of fades up to a darker green. And then very similar, but a darker green that fades up to a lighter green. And then lastly, a light green tank with a dark green band that has that tree, I don't know if it was a, if the logo's the right word, but I believe that's the Greenbelt flag, so.
You know, that, that, that banner, that looks just like the banner that I use on my campaign materials. It does.
We didn't use anything that was copyrighted there.
I don't know. Put my picture up here. I don't think so.
I like the middle.
Mr. Roberts?
I like them all, but the middle ones.
Apologize. I'm just wondering, how is the structural integrity of, of the standpipe? Seeing as how it's this old and steel, hasn't, hasn't lost any thickness over the years? And do you, do you have a rating? Do they have ratings for that, or?
So when we started the project, we conducted a evaluation, and the tank was inspected. And some areas were found to have corrosion just from it not being coated in so long and rust. So those areas will be repaired or those members will be replaced. And it should be as good as new. So nothing major where, you know, it requires a new tank. Everything can be-
Right now, it's structurally sound.
Correct.
As far as you're concerned.
Correct.
And, and how long do you think that, that tank will last? If, I mean, maintain it like this will last indefinitely? Or will there come a point you'll have to replace it, or what?
I mean, if you, if you keep, you know, coating it as required, you shouldn't need to be replaced because there wouldn't be corrosion. That's what the epoxy coating would help protect against.
Electrical system that-
No, WSSC doesn't use cathodic protection for the tanks.
So these are three of the options. As discussed last week with the advisory board, they asked us to consider perhaps, you know, what the cost would be of putting the full logo. And unfortunately, to keep the cost down, these would probably be the options that we would have. We certainly can look further into what the cost of painting the entire logo would be. We've had, we have worked with other communities who have come up with the funding to be able to put their, you know, it's more of a landmark, right? Where they put their logo. You're maybe, you know, they've had different ones, I believe, yeah.
How much would that run? Do you have any idea?
So that's what we're going to come back with as far as costs to see what, to be able to present that to the mayor and council as an option, if that's something that you would move forward with.
We'll work with the residents to, you know, see what their preference is. Mr. Sammarone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Continuing in the line of question of Mr. Roberts, when was the last time the standpipe was the interior resurfaced?
I'm not, I know it was, it's been over 20 years because it's past-
Last cycle.
Past the due date for the coating, but I don't know exactly.
Ideally, it's between fifteen and twenty years, but there was a time, um, when, based on budgetary constraints, we were, put a pause on the entire project, and so that's not now we're ramping back up.
Hey, I'm Airport Tim.
Yeah, this is, um, this is also a question online, but it's related, so that you're fully draining the interior and doing that recoating on the interior?
Correct, yes.
Just let's keep going.
Um, so just a estimated project schedule, um, currently, the project is, we're ready to go to bid, we have the bid-ready drawings, um, hoping to advertise for bid sometime this summer, uh, which would put start of construction in the winter of twenty-four. Um, and then prior to going to construction, we would send out a mailer to the neighboring community and, and the HOA, just letting them know what to expect. And then, during construction, the project will be on WSSC's webpage, and we'll post updates every couple months, or as progress, um, kinda warrants it, just updating everyone on what's going on and anything that is upcoming, and complete the project, uh, in, the duration is eighteen months, so in summer of, uh, twenty-six.
Okay, and when you say construction starts, you mean, uh, the demolition, demolition would take place?
Uh, when I say construction starts, I mean, like, uh, award the bid to a contractor and give them a notice to proceed. Typically, the contractor has a couple months where they don't start work, because they're doing their admin work and preparing to do the work, so, but.
Just really asking, uh, when would the demolition, uh, take place, probably?
Um, I.
And would it be the same contract, the demolition and of a?
Yes, it would be the same contract. I don't know exactly when, because it would depend on the contractor's schedule, um, how they wanna go about doing the work, but I imagine that they would wanna do that early in the project, so they would have more room to work on site.
So maybe spring of twenty-twenty-five?
Yes, that's a possibility.
But in the winter, they'll have the notice to proceed, you know, they'll get awarded in the summer, ever as a forbid, it gets awarded in the winter, so based on what their timeline is and their preference of when to, but all that will be community communicated well in advance.
And then, what to expect during construction? Um, the hours of construction will be, um, per the city of Greenbelt's noise restrictions, or per the county, or per WSSC's, uh, work hours and noise restrictions, whichever is more, um, restrictive. And then, the contractor will put together a noise suppression plan and submit it to, uh, us, WSSC, that'll be reviewed by us and our, our engineer for the project. Um, there'll be soil and sediment erosion control, which includes silt fence and a stabilized construction entrance that will, uh, you know, stop mud and other sediment from entering any adjacent properties or the, or the roadway. Um, and obviously, during construction, we'll demolish the existing dwelling and shed. Um, there will be material deliveries to the site, um, but they will be outside of school, bus pickup and drop-off hours. Um, we worked, we reached out to the neighbor, I forget which schools exactly, but the neighboring schools.
School.
Yeah, um, for those hours, so those have been, um, limited. And then, as we said, the tank will be.
I guess Womata buses, there's a bus that goes up and down, um, Lastner Lane, and I don't know if, uh, you probably, the contractor would probably have to coordinate, uh, so that the deliveries, i- if the truck would be on the street or in the driveway, that, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Probably need to, to work with Womata as well.
Okay. And then, um, as we said, the tank will be drained during construction, but there won't be any impacts to, uh, water. Customers won't be out of water for the, they'll still have water. Um, there's just a tie-in on Lastner Lane that may require a, a short shutdown of a water main, kinda localized in that area to make the tie-in, which I believe we modeled it, it's like ten houses, um, but that would only be, that would be at, probably at night for eight hours, so, nothing major, or long-term.
Prior to that shutdown.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Roberts, yes.
Hi, I have one question, just out of curiosity, purely, and then one business question. A curiosity question, what happens to the water when you drain it? Where does it go?
Educated guess, they pump it out.
Yeah, I believe it just goes back into the system.
Back to the system. Once it gets to a certain level, then we have to pump it out, because it gets, the pressure gets too loaded and naturally flow.
Gotcha, okay. And then, I hear communication coming up a lot, um, I see that we have some customer advocates, is that your correct title with us? How are customers being contacted? I know I heard by mail, are they being contacted by phone? Are you guys canvassing in person? Are you verifying that you've gotten in touch with every household? I just wanna make sure that everyone who might be impacted by this is definitely being contacted.
Well, on a shutdown this small, where if there's approximately ten customers, they will actually get a letter to their door. So it'll be a doorknob hanger on their door at least forty-eight hours in advance. And on that letter, we have the date, the time, and my name and phone number will be on there, along with the contact manager's name and phone number, if they have any questions.
Respectfully, I think that the community believes it's a lot more than just ten houses.
You know, before the shutdown, if we had to do a shutdown, we would have to shut the water off, to do the tie-in.
Okay.
So we will let those customers who will be, who are impacted by that shutdown, we will let those customers know.
And then what about general project updates? As far as everyone on Lastner, how their traffic might be impacted, or the noise that might be, are, when, when are they getting communication, and how?
Uh, they'll get, uh, a mailer prior to construction, so prior to a, uh, award the notice to proceed to the contractor, we'll send out a mailer to the surrounding neighborhood.
So I've heard mailer twice, but that's it? That's the only contact?
But we do also advise mayor and council also, they would be notified also.
Hey, you know, you might want to, uh, run some sort of a notice in, in our publication of record, uh, the Green Belt News Review, and that way, uh, the whole community would have a chance to kind of, uh, see when something's coming up. Yeah, uh, council member, go ahead.
Uh, just to add, that would be really helpful, as the mayor was saying, because, um, because the school is right there, even people who don't live on Lastner and in that community are driving through there, biking through there and such, so it would be helpful to make sure that there's a wider, you know, you sort of hit a wider, uh, base of folks.
And we also will have a project sign on site, and that project will have a project number, it will have the contract manager's name, phone number, so there's, you got any questions, there will always be something there.
That's good, but a notice in the, uh, in the paper would be, uh, be a really effective, the best way probably to, to reach out to the broader community, above and beyond putting notices on people's doors.
So who will we contact to get that information in the paper?
Green Belt News Review, okay.
We'll, we'll send you a contact.
In the past, we've also coordinated with WSSC to assist them, and we work with our PIO, and we put them, you know, on our social media, and we typically will put something in our city ad saying, expect, you know, projects starting and with a little, with the information on who they can contact, so we can, we can work together on that.
And that's an amazing, uh, major component of anytime we do work, is that communications plan, so we'll work closely with Terry, as we've done in the past, to get the.
She always try to get them to buy an ad in the news review.
But I do think the point about the school is a good one, I think, making sure that they can, I don't know, I don't know whether they have a, an email newsletter or a paper newsletter, but I think, because that could be, um, i- even though you're trying to keep it outside of school hours, I think letting people know when the project's happening through the school will get people who don't live nearby, I think that's a good point.
Yeah, so I have a contact with Prince George County School Board, that anything that's affecting the school, I contact that person, and my communications go through that person, and then she disseminates the information out.
Okay, it might be worth checking directly, seeing if they'll give you a contact directly, or find a contact directly at the school, so that it doesn't have to filter through quite so many layers, if, if, if that's possible, but, yeah.
Actually, to be totally honest with the, the schools, even with shutdowns, if we have to shut down the school, they don't want us going to the school and giving it to the principal. There's one contact, Prince George County Public Schools, that we filter that information to.
Right, but, and, and it will be disseminated, and then it can, you know, go on their own little blast out what they, what they have, you know, if they'll use, if they use Dojo or whatever messaging service they use, probably the same as us, so, uh, and it will go all to all the parents and everything, so, but that's usually how it filters through the system, yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, one more thing. Um, I would just ask that you, if you're releasing this, uh, PowerPoint to the public, if you can just, like, asterisk that last one, because it's not true that there will be no interruptions. You did just tell us that for ten houses, there will be at least an overnight disruption. I just think it's, it's important to be transparent.
Um, it may have been, I'll look back to see, uh, because I don't think this is the updated, um, presentation, but we'll look back.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
See, that part is missing, she can't see this.
Okay. Telecommunications plan.
Okay, my turn. Uh, again, Wayne Anderson for WSSC. During the project, WSSC communications will remain active for the, um, microwave link and a data master, the, the master station there controls multiple locations throughout Greenbelt and Prince George County, so it, it has to stay online, so that, you'll notice two antennas will get relocated on top of the tank, it's not new stuff, but it's repositioning during the project. And there was a Green Belt Police and Public Works radio equipment on the property that we discussed last meeting, that has since been removed from the property, um, they are not planning to put it back. They went to the public safety P-25 system on the county net, and in an effort to save the city of Greenbelt money, they opted not to put it back. That's what I was told. Okay, um, next item, uh, T-Mobile Northeast LLC is proposing to install a one-hundred-and-ten-foot temporary ballast monopole adjacent to the current facility. I believe it's shown on one of the, the next slide, actually. My understanding, T-Mobile's approached City of Greenbelt directly for permission and has a meeting in July, related to that matter.
Yeah, we, we talked about it a bit. So, uh, just in terms of, uh, the timeframe, how that will mesh up with the other construction, uh, i- if it's going out to bid, when, when is the monopole going to go in, and when is it gonna come out?
Unfortunately, the monopole has to go in first, um, so that we can have the contract bid showing the actual work that needs to be done on the structure. Once T-Mobile removes their antennas and hardware, the subcontractor will come in, some contractor will come in and accurately bid our project, so that we can award it. If we try to do it now with T-Mobile in place, historically, somebody leaves something behind, and there's overages on the bill, so this is why we do that piece first.
So that, that's coming, uh, in the next month or two?
Um, forecast for August, to begin, once the permits are awarded, um, or, or granted, is my understanding, um, and that's why we're trying to go to bid late summer.
They meet, yeah, do they meet in, uh, July?
Um, I believe they're taking it to the telecommunications commission at the end of June, and this will be on council's agenda, the monopole on June third, along with this, we're treating them as two separate projects.
Thank you.
So the next slide goes a little deeper and gives more detail about that temporary monopole.
Let's see, next slide.
All right, um, like, like I mentioned, it's a temporary monopole, uh, if you can notice on the right-hand image at the top corner, you can see the square, the temporary monopole just adjacent to the current fence line. And the image on the left is the depiction of, uh, the proposed structure.
Okay, and the standpipe, the standpipe is eighty-three feet tall, and the monopole is, uh, one-hundred-and-ten feet.
Yes, sir, that's so that the signal can propagate around, over the.
See antenna at the top, or is that, without the antenna?
My understanding, that includes the antenna at the top, and that's so that the signal can propagate over the tank and, and provide coverage to Greenbelt.
So when the antennas go back on the tank, they will stay at the same height, more or less?
They'll, they'll go back at the current height.
So they'll go down a bit?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, and that would be the contractor that's doing the construction would actually move the antenna, or is that something that would hap- happen after, uh, the construction is complete?
That, that is all handled by T-Mobile, it's their hardware, their equipment, so they have to manage their contractor, so that would happen after the tank is completely painted and refinished.
Right, and, and it's our, our standpipe tower, so we, we'll have a say in that and what happens, right?
I'd have to refer to legal counsel on that, I can't, I don't know if I understand the question.
Oh, I should say, you know, it, it is our standpipe, so I just wanna assert that.
I understand, and I will certainly relay that to WSSC, thank you.
And so this is just, uh, some contact information, um, for those that are not aware, we have a customer service line, twenty-four-hour emergency call center, anyone sees anything unusual, they experience discolored water, um, if for some reason someone needs to file a claim, um, there's the phone number and an email address, uh, we have, um, some financial assistance programs on our website, and then we always encourage everyone to sign up for our customer notification system, there's the email address, and this is really helpful, because you can actually put in multiple addresses, so if you wanna put your work address, your mom's address, so you get text messages, which is great, um, I know I'm, I take full advantage of that, and just knowing when you're gonna, there may be some emergency or a water outage, when you can expect that to, water to be restored, so beyond this project, it's a really great tool for everyone.
Hey, with, uh, just thinking about contingencies with, if there was some sort of an emergency or a problem there with the standpipe or its operations, uh, would the city automatically get some sort of a text message or some sort of direct notice that there's a problem? Or would filter through, would we, you know, that's the question, so is, would we, in fact, if there's an emergency or a problem, get some sort of immediate notification that, that something's going on there, or would we hear from Mr. Wilkins?
So yes, if you give me a point of contact on who you want to get that information to, then once I get it, I will make sure you get it.
Okay, but there's no, with the, uh, emergency call center and electronic text messages, there's no, you can't.
Before the customer notification, you set up it by address?
Right.
So if you were to set up the address of the standpipe in your notification, and something happened, then you would get a text message for that address, if you listed that as one of your addresses.
Yeah, but separately, we also have a list, um, of contact information for each of the municipalities, so if there's an additional point of contact where you would wanna get that call at three in the morning, or two in the morning, or whenever the emergency, Dave's always awake, he doesn't, he doesn't ever sleep, he doesn't ever sleep, so you would be getting it from him, right? So, um, we certainly, yeah.
So in a lot of times, uh, in the middle of the night, I will reach out, if the municipality has a police department.
Yes, we do.
I will reach out to the police department.
Right.
They're aware, yes, of course.
Exactly.
Very good, very good.
Um, and then also, um, it's not on the list, but just, we had some questions that came up last week, that if anyone sees, um, you know, anything happening on the property, right? We recognize this is his home, that's no longer occupied, um, we actually do have a police department, so, um, we informed, um, the meeting, at the meeting last, um, week, that we actually have patrols that go and protect our assets, so we actually have our own police department that will make sure to patrol this area as well, um, so people feel comfortable, because I know I live near an abandoned home, and sometimes it's disconcerting, you don't know who's there, so, um, which is why, once we demolish the home, there won't, you know, it'll be a, just a passive green space, and so people will feel a little more comfortable with that.
Just wanted to notify as well, we also notify on next door, so if there's a situation that arises, next door, you'll be notified as well.
Okay, thank you. That pretty much wraps up the presentation, you've got some.
Ask one more question.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Mr. Roberts, please.
So, you know, forget about the, the old house on the site, do you have a problem with people vandalizing other facilities, or, or have they vandalized the standpipe? with people vandalizing other facilities or or have they vandalized the standpipe at all or anything like that?
It's funny you say that, because we do have a particular standpipe that we're working with right now in Montgomery County, that there were some individuals, we have no idea how they got up there, but they did graffiti the standpipe. And we had, we're in the process of taking care of that standpipe right now, um, doing the same process, but
Is it as big as Greenbelt or is it bigger?
There are two standpipes there. Um, and it 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 left, we cleaned it up, but it left a pretty bad rust spot, so we're gonna be taking care of that. But yes.
Other than that, they're not like stealing your pipes or anything?
No, not stealing our pipes. That's not gonna
A little graffiti, but they're not in there bashing stuff up or stealing, you know, copper. There's no copper there, I'm sure, but.
Be harder to to get up the side. I mean, it's difficult. I haven't been up there. Mr. Roberts may have actually been up there. But uh, so, yeah, is it, is it gonna be more difficult, uh, there's to to actually climb up the tire, the tower to get access there? Is about the same?
There, make sure this is working, sorry. Um, there is a security hatch on the safety climbing system.
Uh-huh.
I believe we're doing an upgrade on this.
It's gonna be upgraded.
When when we do it currently, it it's a steel gate with a padlock to access that ladder today. Um, all of our facilities are equipped that way, but as he mentioned, it has happened. I I have seen, personally seen it on multiple structures. It's unfortunate, but it does happen.
Mr. Roberts.
How high up did the graffiti go? Did they hang off the side of it and do like the middle of the tank?
The the one he's discussing is about 40 feet from the top, so they were held down.
Oh, my. Oh, gee.
Yeah, and then
Work, yeah.
Yeah.
Mountain climbers, I don't know how they did it, man.
I've 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 seen banners and I've seen
Let's see, Councilmember Pope, you were at first, and then Pompey.
I just wondered if you have any cameras? You have put cameras up by chance?
On
During construction or even after in construction? Like you said, somebody's climbing, you know, I mean
We we have installed cameras at some facilities.
But we certainly wouldn't go list by list of who has
Of course, no, no. I'm just worried, I'm just wondering what your safety regulations or what your security system, you know, do you, are you using cameras for certain locations or, you know, because, I mean?
Yeah, so our security department has deployed cameras at some locations.
This point, because it's so tall and you might need a drone.
We have some, they even have motion sensors.
Right, oh, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Councilmember.
Um, I'm sorry if you already mentioned this. What is the height of the fence gonna be? Is it gonna be the same height all the way around?
It'll be an eight-foot, but it will not have barbed wire. It'll be a black PVC-coated. New presentation had a picture of it, but I guess.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the other, my other question was, I, you know, I see that you guys are, you're putting in the the pollinator garden and some other native shrubs and trees, which is great. Um, what kind of maintenance schedule is that on? So I assume you guys, and you mentioned that it'll be grassy, so you guys will be coming regularly to cut the grass and maintain the gardens and, um, what what kind of schedule is that? Like, is it weekly, bi-weekly, or, um, how frequently do you guys do that kind of maintenance?
I'm not sure of the exact maintenance schedule, but they do the maintenance, just like the tank we have there, they were going there and they would keep the grass cut. So whatever that schedule was, it should be the same schedule after construction is over. But no, I don't know exactly if it's every three weeks, every two weeks.
Okay, so what what I'm going to do, uh, I'd like to to actually pivot to our staff to kind of summarize the staff report. I see we have at least one member of the advisory planning board. We'd like to hear from them. We'll go to public comment. Uh, before we do that, are there any other questions from council? I I had one question just about communication and, uh, you know, so you're within the incorporated boundaries of the city of Greenbelt, but just across Ridge Road is an unincorporated area. The property owners there, uh, the Jones family, have you been in contact with them?
Property that's right next to us?
Right next to Ridge Road.
Shared with them, as well as tonight's meeting was shared with them. They did participate in the T-Mobile, um, APB meeting. I don't know if they were at the last APB meeting.
They were not.
But they they do have information, they provided some recommendations as things they'd like to just be shown on the plan, like their property boundary, at least where the right away. So I'll share that, I'll forward that to them.
Yeah, very good. Uh, of course, I I and we have some real concerns just about with the construction, uh, the sand blasting and making sure, just monitoring and making minimizing, mitigating, removing any environmental impacts. And I think staff and APB sort of covered that quite a bit. So Mr. Segworth and Terry Ruby, would you like to just give us a, uh, an overview of your, uh, report and recommendations?
Thank you, Mayor. Ryan Segworth, community planner, I reviewed the plans. Um, some of the comments that are provided in the memo to the city council were addressed, um, at the hearing, um, for, um, one example is the landscape plan. I still haven't seen a, um, a plan sheet for the landscape plan to actually review, but I did appreciate them showing that in their presentation. You'll see in the memo that the APB had some concerns. They they appreciated the landscaping and the the pollinator garden, but they were, they were concerned about the maintenance. I, uh, I'm not an expert in pollinator gardens, but I understand that they take a fair bit of maintenance. And so there was concerns about maintenance and maybe that some sort of equivalent sort of landscaping feature that requires less maintenance might be a good choice. Um, I did have questions about lighting on the site, especially exterior lighting. In my understanding, through the representatives at the APB hearing, that there's no exterior lighting on this site at all. So there will be no, um, no sort of encroachment of light onto adjacent properties. All of the lighting, uh, shown on the plan is for interior structures, exit signs and and those types of things. Um, primarily, the review focused around how to sort of incorporate this facility better into the neighborhood than it was looking at the construction itself. Um, I mean, that kind of sums it up. Um, one of the, I guess, one of the other things is they want to reuse that driveway approach on Lastner Lane, and that was constructed as a residential, uh, approach. Um, it's not really designed, but with turning radii to handle trucks, it's really designed for residential vehicle. And so we strongly suggested to them that they, um, obtain a right-of-way permit from Greenbelt and and reconstruct that approach to a commercial standard to handle the trucks that are expected to be seen there. Um, and it was hard to review the plans because there was no approach at all shown in the plans, existing or proposed. That pretty much sums it up. The APB, uh, did endorse the light green with trees at the top banner as a, um, as their choice for the standpipe, um, paint scheme and did endure. Did, they did mention that some refinement to that banner might be useful in terms of the trees, and the city's logo was also, um, uh, did also add a comment from APB in here about having the landscape plan that WSSC's supposed to be providing to us, that it be reviewed by the city horticulturist, horticulturalist.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
That pretty much sums up. A lot of the other comments were provided, that the LOD looks like it's slightly on the adjacent property, there's things that can be sort of
Ms. Ruby?
Well, I would just like to add one thing. We we did advise them that they needed to apply to Park and Plan and Commission for mandatory referral. Process that they may or may not be required to go through a mandatory referral. If they are, then we would be advisory and these comments may be transmitted. It's important to note that the state agency, WSC, is exempt from plan, from zoning authority, so that if you were familiar with the mandatory, there's suggestions, just like many of our comments, that we we don't have authority on private property mandate a lot, but these are just suggestions made, as Ryan indicated, that we felt would improve upon the plans in terms of
The only other comment I have, because I haven't heard it addressed, could you address the concerns about lead paint and air quality and and how you will address that?
Thank you, I forgot about that.
Yeah, um, can you pull the presentation back up and go back to the what to expect during construction slide?
Yeah.
Oh, there was a fence.
Oh, there was the fence.
Right there.
Right there.
Right there.
Yes, so, um, the picture on the top right, that is a different standpipe, WSSC standpipe. Kind of shows the containment system. Um, up top, you can see the the tarp that's hanging down. Um, so on the ground, it's tough to see in the picture, because it's kind of hidden by the banner on the right and the tree, but there's a tarps on the ground that are, you can see like the the rigging that's hanging down. So when they blast and paint the tank, those tarps will be raised up and contain the entire standpipe. And then the picture below it, that is a dust collector. Um, so while they're blasting, they'll have a dust collector and, um, that'll be collecting all the dust within the containment system. And then also, they will be doing environmental monitoring onsite.
Tell us about that.
The contractor is required to have a third-party environmental consultant who will set up monitoring around the outside of the perimeter and just taking measurements. And if there's any issues, they will obviously shut work down immediately.
Yeah, we're very, very sensitive about this. People are walking their dogs, kids are out playing, is very, very close to the elementary school. So how long this blasting process, uh, blasting off the the lead, lead paint that's on there, how how long is this going to go on? Is it something that would happen in a week or two weeks or?
Kind of depends on on weather, um, and timing and everything, because obviously if it's real windy, they can't raise the containment system. So I would imagine month?
Month. And and with the third-party monitoring, uh, would we be, uh, have some standing and and just being informed with, uh, directly, direct communication with the third-party monitoring providers so that we can assure our residents that that everything is okay, just in terms of the testing?
I mean, we can certainly communicate that and let you know what the plan is as we get closer to, um, the project. Um, but again,
So much the plan, but when it's actually happening, we would want to, you know, we would want to be able to to know exactly what, how many particulates are escaping, if if there are any, if there's any lead paint residue getting back into the air that is beyond what OSHA standards might be, we would want to know that, uh, in real time.
So if we, um, if we come across an issue that's reported to us, we will communicate that to your office.
And then if you want to go back, actually, a couple slides, there's the example of the fence. So, yeah, this is another WSSC, um, uh, water storage facility, and you can see the the black chain link fence that'll be installed.
I was just thinking, that's a good-looking standpipe there. Yeah, yeah, blue, yeah, it does. So that's the fence, that's an eight-foot fence.
Correct.
And there's one access point through the front grate, the front gate there, and that would be locked?
Correct.
And as far as the exterior, uh, there would be a number, a street number, but there's no other signage or any other obtrusive, uh, signs that this is a, uh, a utility facility? This is the tank. Okay. Done. Okay. Uh, I was wondering, Ms. Gornay, you you are with the APB, can you, if you could go over to the the microphone?
I think Ryan summarized our findings. Uh, we definitely would like to see nice landscaping, um, especially on Lastner Road. And we are very, you know, concerned with maintenance. The, uh, the plan which was shown is very schematic and, uh, probably could use a little bit of refinement. Uh, and, uh, I guess, uh, the horticulturists could help. Um, also, um, it's good you showed us the fence, because you didn't show that to us last time. I'm glad you did, because my feeling was, it was a much heavier fence with some kind of blackout. And, uh, so it's nice to see that it's doable, I think, especially there are good, uh, trees. And, uh, we also mentioned that there should not be any barbed wire. So we, you you confirm that? Okay, good. And, um, also, we would like to really have a good, um, I think the idea of having a band for the, uh, top of the building with a, of a standpipe with some kind of light green color or is nice, but it also requires, it will be seen from quite a lot of places. So, um, we had logos done for our 75th anniversary. I was actually in the committee. I I kind of initiated, uh, the notion of having a logo. And, uh, the logo of the tree also is present in many different places, including, I think, in our new sign on Southway. Uh, so, uh, you have plenty of examples of things you can go to. Uh, and are you thinking also of writing the name of the town?
Greenbelt.
Greenbelt?
Yeah.
Okay, because that was not mentioned, that was not shown in the diagram there. So that, um,
I think they mentioned that would be an additional cost to us if we wanted the city's name on there.
Well, if we want to do the the logo in three or four colors, but if we wanted to put "Greenbelt is Great" up there, we'd probably do that, right?
Especially, this is kind of the very edge of Greenbelt. But I also, in my hat of, uh, preservationist architectural historian, I think, uh, it's really interesting to think that this is such an all resource. Uh, this was before any house was completed. And, uh, it would be nice if maybe the city, um, highlights, uh, that notion of a new standpipe being kind of that, the origin of history of Greenbelt. Uh, I don't know how we can do that, but, um, um, it's not a water tower, it's a standpipe. It's very different in shape and concept. And, uh, it would be quite interesting to explore a little bit the history of the standpipe.
I I think that's an excellent point. Uh, it could be, uh, historic amenity, you know, you know, next, it could be right up there next to the, uh, Greenbelt utility pole as far as
Yeah, we could have actually a sign, a signage. We do have, um,
Sort of a joke.
Signs, uh, in the city in different places. We have one for the pool. Uh, and it could be interesting for people to learn, uh, why this was such an important feature in the city. And, um, so that could be, I think it has really historic merit, and, uh, the notion of having the landscape around it is nice. Uh, I agree totally with the notion of a driveway being, uh, having to be really fitted to trucks. Um, but, um, we may think about other ways in which we can promote this project.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments. Thank you so much. So, yeah, Mayor Portem.
Do you want to do some comments?
We're gonna pivot to, uh, to public comments. Uh, there's, is there, there's one or two online, do you, do you want to?
Yeah, so we have several comments from from Jay Davis. Um, could the, uh, WSSC work schedule and, um, status be placed on the city website? I think that, I mean, that can go on the planning page very easily. I think we often put project updates there. And then also, um, she's suggesting that the tree plan, the landscaping plan should go to the advisory committee on trees to review. Uh, and then the final one was just a comment of "Thank you, um, everyone for giving our creative teens and other residents excellent ideas for decorating the standpipe, not to mention describing the existing basic lack of security." So, um, and then there was one that came in from, by email, um, from Florrie Leets on Julian Court. Uh, "Consideration is being given to the side of the site facing Lastner Lastner Lane with lots of trees and pollinator garden. However, I" However, I live on Julian Lane and would like to see more trees on the backside of the property so that we don't have to see the tower. Is it possible to add more of a tree screen between the tower and those of us that live on Julian Court?" So that was the question from...
And the properties on Julian Court are arguably closer than some of the ones on Lastner, so, that's a good point. I'd like to, would that be possible, just kind of as you're looking at the landscaping plan, also looking at the rear, the side facing Julian Lane?
Yeah, we can certainly take it back to see, again, it's additional costs, but we can certainly put it into consideration as we finalize that tree plan. So perhaps if we're not going to move forward with anything like a pollinator garden, maybe there's a way to redistribute some of the funds that we were allocating for that, to perhaps look at some other trees on the other side.
Well, certainly, the tree scape should be the same, if not better than before, regardless of the pollinator garden, so I don't know if any trees are coming down in the rear. There are, okay, so that could be a problem there. Ms. Pope, and then I want to go to some additional public comments.
And I did ask that last, at our last meeting, to make sure that we're talking to our arborist and work with our group about the trees and, you know, that you're removing and what's going to be replaced. And also, Julian Court came up as well in our discussion, that we're going to take a look at the back as well, because those houses are very close on that property.
And we've met out onsite with Mr. Zeller and Melanie Cantwell as well, to discuss those trees that we have to remove and the possibility.
We actually have a plan with both homeowners, on what trees that we are going to put and how many.
Right, but did we talk to our arborist about that as well? Did we talk to Brian Townsend or anyone?
These trees would actually be on their property, so I don't know if your arborist has to approve what's going on to their property.
I think maybe not approve, but maybe just, just for him to give the opportunity to take a look and maybe give input.
And I'm going to recognize Mr. Zeller in a couple of moments. Mr. Roberts, you had a comment?
Yeah, you were talking about the landscape, I wanted to say, you know, you should at least have some milkweed, because that's the monarch butterfly, you know, what keeps them going, what they need is what they need, and so, I don't know about a full-fledged pollinator garden, but you should have stuff like that that is providing for the butterflies and other critters as well.
Okay, let's continue with a public comment. Mr. Zell?
Thank you, good evening. My name's Thomas Zeller, I live on 116 Julian Court, so I'm one of the two immediate neighbors to the stand pipe. And I think listening to my neighbors on Julian Court, the most important point that many have made are the concerns about the lead dust and the monitoring of the sand blasting and how that's going to be, you know, how that's going to be monitored. It was reassuring to hear that there is going to be third-party monitoring, it would be good to know how information from that company is being communicated to whom, I mean, who has access to that data and who's aware of that. Then I wanted, and so I just wanted to underline what Mayor John and others have said and put three exclamation marks next to it, because I think that's a hugely important point, right? There's been a big kind of generational turnover in Boxwood Village, so there's lots of young kids that play outside, and so that's obviously a major concern. There, I wanted to add that when the house on 241 Lastner is going to be demolished, that most likely will produce lead dust as well, right? Because there's, it can be safely assumed that there's lead paint in that house, so is there any monitoring during that demolition as well?
So whoever is going to receive the contract for demolition, that's part of the scope of work, is to address any lead issues. It's not something unfamiliar to companies that demolish homes, older homes, that they would have to mitigate lead.
Yeah, so, and also, you mentioned coordinating with the Greenbelt Fire and Rescue Squad as perhaps using the house for some sort of practice or... So we'll need to communicate what their plans may be, that needs to, we need to talk with them and talk with the residents, I don't know exactly what they have in mind, you know, we're very, very supportive of the fire department and whatever they need, but whatever they need or what they do needs to be cleared with the neighbors. Yeah.
There was one more, a follow-up from Florrie Leets from Julian Court, also asking about the lead dust during the raising of the residential home that you just addressed, but also asking if it would be possible to get a list of which homes would be affected by the water shut-offs.
I believe they're all on Lastner Lane.
Okay, so all on Lastner Lane, and they would get notices ahead of any shut-offs, but...
Okay, let's see, we're going to take another, any other public comments. I see Mr. Orleans has his hand up, Mr. Orleans. After this, we'll wrap up, and I do have an information item.
The slides as projected on the screen are somewhat different than the slides in the handout we provided earlier tonight, including their enumeration and including one slide that was projected that's not in here at all. So I'm wondering if, since I've inquired and Greenbelt doesn't have the slides as projected, if a slide can be made available to Greenbelt so I can get a copy, and if someone might get a copy. Irrelevant maybe, except that at some point, more questions might be raised, and it would be good to have the reliable information as it was conveyed tonight, when someone might raise a question in the future. My second comment is this, people on both, participants at the table, both sides at the table tonight, sometimes speak in very quiet tones, and even though the red light on your microphone might be on, might appear as though you're being recorded, I simply don't know, I can't hear some of what you're saying, and I, as old as I am, still have relatively good hearing. And I don't know that the streaming or the broadcast or the recording of this is picking it up, so I don't mind people speaking in quiet tones, but if you would pull the microphone closer to you, I think you would be captured better, and those of us in the room and maybe watching online or on TV or whatever could hear you as well, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I have to tell you, occasionally, I will tune in to the YouTube recordings of our proceedings and the comments, and it's quite audible, so although some people may have a hard time hearing what's being said in the room, on cable TV and on YouTube and Facebook, the vocal quality is actually quite good.
And Councilmember McKinney confirms that as well, that she could hear online.
So I'd like to, would you like to go first, Monica?
I was just going to state to Mr. Orleans' comments about the PowerPoint presentation, just wanted to remind everyone that we were actually before a public body on Thursday evening, and so today is Monday evening, so we were able to incorporate some of the revisions into that PowerPoint as quickly as possible, so the city does now have that current PowerPoint presentation.
We appreciate your responsiveness to that.
Ms. Ruby?
And I was just going to state that we will be posting the revised presentation on our city website under Planning Community Development. We created, under Utilities, there, this project is listed with, along with the plans, it'll have this updated presentation, and Mr. Orleans, if you would like my black-and-white copy for now, you're welcome to it, and I'm happy to provide a colored one to you as well.
Well, thank you, Mr. Johnson, yeah.
To address, thank you, I was going to say that same comment, but Mr. Orleans, it seems like you have a voice like mine, where it's a coach's voice, and some others have more of a silent but deadly voice, so either way, we can all be heard, so just wanted to comment on that.
And I also want to make sure that we did highlight the need to collaborate closely with your horticulturists, so we're going to make sure that our arborist, Doug Sievers, works, that's one of the things that we do pride ourselves of working with our neighbors, and if a municipality has their own arborist, we'll make sure that we're on the same page, because perhaps they may have some suggestions that we may not have thought of, but I know our arborist does a really good job in using as many native plantings as possible. We've taken some, into account some of the comments that were made last week as well, as far as something that would be, you know, provide more screening and more visually appealing, and so, and obviously take consideration the maintenance schedule.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Hey, I just want to, on behalf of council, you know, thank you for, for working closely with the council, working with our advisory planning board and the residents that will be impacted by this project. The timeline is very, very important, and because it's such a vital part of our community, you know, there's a great deal of concern, you know, about the sand blasting, the lead paint, and also just about the appearance in general, the landscaping and whatnot. So I know you're going the extra mile to some extent, but that's our expectation in our partnership as we work together to, to make sure that WSSC has the capacity to provide great water to all of Prince George's County. Yeah, cheers, that's about 162 million gallons of water there that goes out there. That's a lot of water. So thank you very much, we'll be looking for an update, and, you know, once again, with the sand blasting, if there's, we really would like to have real-time access to what's going on there as the project, as the month-long sand blasting goes on and with the demolition, we'd like to have plenty of notice on that, and certainly, a good way of doing that is by talking to us, but also posting in the Greenbelt News Review, that's a really good way to reach a lot of people. So I think that pretty much wraps things up, except there's an information item, and I'm going to ask Ms. Ruby and perhaps Ms. Gornay to kind of stick around for that information item. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, I forgot to bring my water bottle.
Oh, wow.
I could use a drink of pure Prince George's County water. Straight from the tap. I prefer to let it sit for a little while. So as far as information items, there's a hearing coming up tomorrow. Mr. Orleans, will you please step away from Ms. Ruby? Thank you. There's a hearing coming up tomorrow with the Prince George's County Historic Preservation Commission, and I'm just wondering, Ms. Ruby, I know you're going to be there, it's virtual.
Yeah, Megan Searing sent me an email about that, too.
Yes, you had some questions about the significance of the architect.
Yes.
So if you have anything you want to share?
No, I, you know, I register to ask questions and I never got an answer, I don't know whether I'm on or not, my computer is berserk right now, I'm not even sure I can connect, but yeah, I never, you know, I did online, it's very, they don't give you a confirmation that you are...
I'm not sure, usually, I think it's the day, it's, it's, it's closer to the event, it says you'll get confirmation.
Okay.
I believe. But I'm signed up to, yeah, so probably tomorrow morning, I believe. I've signed up to speak, I'm going to speak in support of the staff recommendation, which is designate the entire building, all different years, I think there's six or five additions as historic, so we'll be signing up, I'll be signing up to speak in support of the staff recommendation.
I was wondering, Ms. Ruby, can you quickly describe the Historic Preservation Commission the way that it works? And so they have a hearing, how will they actually arrive at a decision? And so it's just a little, it's, the Prince George's County Historic Preservation Commission is staffed by Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning, but they're an independent commission, and they have the power to designate structures within Prince George's County as historic, and that designation has implications.
Actually, the person who wrote the report lives in Greenbelt, Jennifer Stabler, and, but she never, did she approach you, or did she?
Oh, we, well, we knew, we actually asked for the assessment.
Okay.
So the city asked for the evaluation.
Done very quickly, yeah?
It has to be done within a certain amount of days of receiving the city's request, so yes, it is done, but as she indicated in her response back to Megan just asking about, that they, that's, it doesn't complete, they hope to learn more, this was just to get it in front of the HBC and as part of the designation.
Oh, with national historical nominations, and usually it takes a long time.
This isn't, this is just a local designation, though.
It's a local designation.
It's a local, so it's a little different. It already is a contributing resource in our National Historic District and in our National Historic Landmark Designation. So this is adding the local protection, which we know is so important, because with the federal designation, if you're not using federal monies, it doesn't provide any protections. So that was sort of, you know, the motivation there is to protect that. So my understanding is they'll be voting on, you know, on the staff recommendations, very similar to the way the planning board works, you know, they're presenting staff recommendation, they vote. I don't know whether there's, quite frankly, I don't know whether there's like an appeal period or anything like that, but I believe they've shared all the material with, you know, the Board of Ed, so...
Okay, I just thought I'd ask, bring that up as an information item. Great item to discuss.
I mean, actually, the school is, I looked at pictures and...
And we're talking about the Dora Kennedy French Immersion School, or the original Greenbelt High School on Edmundston Road.
It's a very nice building, what I, I looked at, you know, the best-known school from the resettlement administration is the one in what's now called Roosevelt and what's called Hightown, because it has that great mural by Ben Shahn, which is very, so famous. So I look, I tried to find pictures of the exterior of the school, but this is a very nicely proportioned facade, it's very simple.
To read the staff report, I learned a lot from a lot I didn't know about the structure, so...
It's very modern-looking, it's more modern, actually, than the school here, and it's really forward-looking in, so maybe Douglas Ellington may, it's not his style totally, but he's more into more details and things like that, but it could have been, you know, he would have supervised the project.
Well, I know they did some extensive renovations to the library, the school library, media center, the gymnasium and whatnot, and the original gymnasium, the wood floors, it was really beautiful. Is there any, are there any murals or anything in there? I don't know, yeah, Mr. Roberts?
Well, they used to have some really beautiful wood, wood stands in the auditorium. They got rid of them and put in some new fangled stuff that's just...
The auditorium was built on the first phase?
I mean, the original stuff was really, really nice, you know, so it's a shame they got rid of that entry whenever...
Yeah, actually, one building which concerns me a lot is Saint U's School, because it's in, it's in bad shape, and it's, it's, it's an interesting structure, and it should... It was used as a workshop space, this was the first original school, I mean, the school and it was the compound, the church was built later, and it's really important, I mean, we, I've done research on Catholic complexes in Prince George's County, and it was the way things were built, they built first the school, this was more important than the church, and the church was, the service was in the, but the, you know, I've been to Halloween things there, I mean, it's...
Is it just empty now?
It's been empty for about 15 years.
It's empty, but they're still using it for CDD classes and stuff, and there's, there's something, there's something going, there's something in discussion, so I'm not, I'm not in liberty.
There was a discussion, but the building needs to...
Oh, yes, absolutely, I agree, yes.
Okay, just wanted to check in about, about the Historic Preservation Commission meeting, and you're going to testify and make comments, and are other public, yes, so just wanted an update on that. Thank you.
You, I was trying to find that report you were referencing, can you send that, Terry, because I'm not finding exactly where it is poking around on the...
Yes.
...the website.
I will send.
Connect for some reason. Would you say something about the architect, or?
Sure, can you email me something?
Yes, I will.
I certainly will do that.
Hey, thank you very much, and let's go ahead and call it a night. Hey, thank you, Ms. Gornay.
No way.
Up going off twice, my screen went dark, yeah, and I do have church.
Just send a crystal to everybody, so you should have it.
Thank you very much.